We're going to call this meeting to order. If you'll please rise. I've asked Supervisor Gould for the invocation and Supervisor Bishop to lead us in the pledge.
Please join me in prayer. Lord, we thank you and praise you today for this day that you've given us, Lord. Help us to use it wisely. We thank you for this great nation that you've given us, Lord, and this great county, Lord. Help us to run our meeting wisely and make wise decisions that would honor your word, Lord. Watch over our county employees as they go through their day, Lord, and bring them home safely to the loving arms of their family. And we pray that same thing for our servicemen, soldiers, sailors, airmen, marine, and women across the world, Lord. Bring them home safely to the loving arms of their family. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Please join me as I honor our flag with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I need a motion to call for an executive session to be held on June 17th, 2019 at 9:00 AM for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion and action to approve waiving the reading in full of items presented for discussion, adoption, or approval at this meeting. So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, to come to official business, to come before this board, discussion of pending or contemplated litigation claims and demands. Mr. F.
Nothing to report to the board at this time, thank you.
Are there any committee and/or legislative reports? Supervisor Watson?
No reports this morning, thank you, Chairman.
Supervisor Gould?
None today from Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Bishop?
Only that I've attended all the County Supervisor Association meetings and chaired the Mojave County Caucus meetings.
Thank you. Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had meetings with Chief of Staff, Deputy Chief of Staff, and Legislative aides of Senator McSally and Senema to go over uranium mining on the Strip. Would be testifying Wednesday on Congressman Gohalva's bill to make permanent the withdrawal. Obviously in opposition. And should be bringing back a resolution for the board to consider in a couple of weeks to oppose that. I'm pretty sure it'll probably get through Congress, but in the Senate, hopefully that's where we'll be able to stop it. That's all.
Supervisor Johnson, you going to Washington to testify?
Yes.
Oh, I'd like to see that. Maybe your staff can let us know when that's going to happen? Thank you. Okay, and I attended, this past Wednesday through Friday, I attended the Free Roaming Equids and Ecosystems Sustainability Summit in Reno. For those of you who speak English, it's the Wild Horse and Burrow Conference. This is an issue we've been involved in for many years because of the overpopulation of burrows in the Black Mountain herd management area and the problems that arise because of it. By its own numbers, BLM decided that the Black Mountain landscape can only sustain 472 of these non-native species. Today, there are close to 2,000. Turns out every single herd management area in the West is overpopulated, some by as much as 5,000 percent. This is because the BLM enforced management's handling of the management over the years and the fact that animals reproduce at a quick rate. Adoption programs are just not enough, although now BLM is paying individuals $1,000 to adopt a wild horse or burrow, as well as the holding pens are full. It costs the BLM, which is your money, an average of $50,000 per the lifetime of one of these animals. That adds up to the largest part of BLM's budget. Over the years, we have discussed this with our representatives in Washington with little or no success. The big reason is that every time it was brought up, animal rights activists descended on the discussion with protests and lawsuits. So now, as anyone could have expected, the horse and burrow populations are in a crisis mode, not just because of how wild horses and burrows have overtaken the rangelands and HMAs, but its effect on other native species and sensitive vegetation. As most of you know, our issue here is the wild burrows, and although the two animals are alike, some of the reproducing issues are a little different. For example, an eager spring Clifton allotment reported overuse by wild horses has removed all riparian vegetation, that is, the area by water banks, and compacted the soil. The current flow is less than one gallon per minute. During the summer, bands of wild horses will often spend hours waiting to obtain enough water due to the very low flow. In addition, other wildlife undergo stress as they cannot obtain water while the horses wait for the small depressions to fill. As a result, in drought conditions, both horses and burrows and all of the other natural species are fighting for the little water that's left, so animals are starving and dying of dehydration, which is why we see them coming down from the mountains into Bullhead City and at times being hit by cars and dying. The interesting part of this particular summit was that organizations that historically would be at odds with each other about the proper action to take have come to agreement about this crisis. These organizations include private, public, nonprofit, and government groups. The main theme, which was repeated over and over at this conference, is that we are out of time. Just as an observation, in years gone by, summits like this were met with protests and in some case violent outbreaks. This year, there were none, although we were warned in advance to be prepared. It seems the plight is apparent, and everyone now agrees that something must be done besides BLM's and Forest Service's fertility management program. For the first time, apparently, the term "sale without restriction" and euthanasia are being talked about. We were shown that even with the best outcomes of these fertility programs, the populations are still expanding, albeit at a slower level. Nothing will change until populations are brought down, and then all programs can be put into play and correct population managed. I was surprised to hear the almost total agreement by, again, groups that ordinarily would not support anything they term as inhumane processes. However, it was pointed out that what is happening now is inhumane. It's inhumane euthanasia, as these animals are dying in a most inhumane and cruel fashion. On the flip side, nothing can happen really without the action of Congress. More money is needed, but more importantly, action on the 1971 Wild Horse and Burrow Act and the riders that tied the hands of the BLM and Forest Service. There are congressional hearings promised this summer, and after speaking with Congressman Gosar this weekend, I understand there is a large appropriation on the table. The irritating thing for me, and admitted layman on this topic, is that this is an issue where not only can the problem be solved quickly, but the government can actually make money. Instead of spending the hundreds of millions they are allocating now on feeding and warehousing these animals, money that can be used for other BLM and Forest Service programs. I'm hopeful that some action and change will come from this conference, but I am satisfied that, at least for now, it appears there is the will to make the changes necessary. And that's all I have. Do we have a county administrator's report?
I have no report today, Madam Chairman. However, I'd like to also thank Representative Regina Cobb for her success with the water bill. Thank you very much. That was an incredible effort that she put forth and certainly a tremendous benefit to Mojave County, and I very greatly appreciate all that you've done for us, also your successes in the budgetary process. Thank you again.
Okay, we'll be hearing from Representative Cobb in a few minutes. The approval of the April 15th, 2019 Board of Supervisor Meeting minutes. Motion to approve? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, I'm going to open up the Call to Public. Those wishing to address the Board at the Call to the Public regarding matters not on the Board agenda must fill out and submit to the clerk a Call to the Public request to speak form located in the back of the room prior to the meeting. Pursuant to ARS 38-431.01, a public body may make an open call to the public during public meeting, subject to reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions to allow individuals to address the public body on any issue within the jurisdiction of the public body. At the conclusion of an open call to the public, individual members of the public body may respond to criticisms made by those who have addressed the public body, may ask staff to review a matter, or may ask that a matter be put on the future agenda. However, members of the public body shall not discuss or take legal action on matters raised during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. I think I'm going to bring up a couple of people before I get to a couple of people who have signed up for the Call to Public. We have with us today Anne Marie Ward, and Anne Marie is a new, what's your title? Let's see, you're the Outreach Coordinator for Senator Martha McSally's office, and I had the pleasure of speaking to you last week, and I know you're going to make the rounds and get to know everyone, and we're happy you're here. Just wanted you to come up and introduce yourself.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and members of the Board. It's a delight to be here today and to become a resource for Mojave County. I will be reaching out to not only Mojave County, but also covering Yavapai County, Navajo County, Apache County, and Coconino County, so small territory, right? I'm a local of Yavapai County, born and raised in Prescott, Arizona, and my husband was born and raised in Mojave County in Bullhead City, so it's a real delight to be able to serve this county. As Madam Chairman said, I will be reaching out to each supervisor, and I think most of you are already on my calendar. I am also available to the members of the community, should there be a federal issue that we and Senator McSally's office can help with in any way. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, and we look forward to seeing you for updates. Okay, also, as we spoke about earlier, we have our Representative Regina Cobb here. Come on down. Good morning, Representative Cobb.
Good morning. So glad to be home. I know Hildy and I have had, Supervisor Angus and I have had several conversations over the past months, and several of you actually have, Supervisor Watson and Johnson, we've all discussed Bishop, we've had different issues all the way through this session, and so I'm glad to be home and be looking at you face to face. It was a long session. I think it was 134 days, and we're supposed to be 100-day session. My first session was 68 days, so this was double the session of what we did the first time around. So we had, we had a pretty tenuous session this year, and it probably would have lasted a couple, could have been done probably a few weeks earlier if we had the Senate on board with us on the budget, instead of trying to do policy in the middle of a budget process. And so that was difficult. So we kind of pushed through in the House because we knew we had our, even though we only have a 31-29 split, we knew we had our votes of 31, and we pushed through ahead of time and kind of gave them an extra nudge that they needed to get done within the next few days. So we were able to finish up on Memorial Day. I think we've had some pretty good successes in this county, and Mr. Hendricks, you already, you know, mentioned one of them was our, was our water bill got passed through this year. We have a study committee, then we can give recommendations to the Governor's Office and to ADWR as far as what we feel is best for our own county and our own waters. And so that's going to be starting up this summer, and the committee is outlined pretty well in the bill too, as far as how we can structure the, structure the committee. So we have some recommendations for the Speaker of the House and the Senate President of members we want to have on that Water Committee. So that'll be starting up this summer. But some of the big successes that we've had is we were able to get ongoing funding for EORP relief, for the pension relief that the counties have had to bear, which is $3 million. Also, the Department of Justice, our juvenile detention shifts that we've had over the past several years of $11.3 million, we've got that ongoing now, so I don't have to fight for that every year as I have in the past. Probably the biggest, one of the biggest new money things that we've had this year is Wayfair, and that was worked on very diligently by myself, Representative Toma, and Representative Meznard, to get that Wayfair bill across the finish line. There were some, some issues toward the end that we had to work out, and we were able to do that, and I think that's going to bring in 735 million, or seven, yeah, 735,000 extra dollars for the county this year. So that'll be a big plus. So that's, you know, we haven't been able to, the county hasn't been able to do a use tax prior to that. And so with the retail Wayfair, you'll be able to get a good chunk of money coming into the county for a full year of Wayfair. And I would estimate that's a very conservative number, because we're figuring 85 million for the total for the state and the counties through a year, and so I, I think that that's also a very conservative number. I think that we're going to find that number's probably going to be more than that. I'd be glad to answer any questions if you guys have anything, but thank you so much for having me come in and update you on the budget and what we've done this year.
I see that Supervisor Gould is chomping at the bit.
I'm always chomping. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Representative Cobb, when you speak of Wayfair, that's taxing the Internet. It's sales tax on Internet sales?
This is a call to the public.
Oh, okay, we can ask questions.
I made, I probably made an error by bringing you up now instead of after.
Later, that's okay. I honestly, the Wayfair is making parody between, it's the retail sales online, online retail sales. I'll answer the question just as part of my speech here. It's online retail sales, but it brings parody along with the brick and mortar retail sales too. And there was a South Dakota decision that was made that we really needed to do that or we were going to be facing some lawsuits in the future. So, you know, we needed to do the Wayfair decision anyways. We've been able to, oh, one of the big things too is the tax cut this year, conformity. We've got conformity done this year, which will bring in about 300 million reduction in taxes for the taxpayers over the next few years. So, thank you very much. I won't answer any more questions since it's called to the public.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, members, for keeping in touch with me all year long and making sure I knew what was happening at home to where I can represent you well at the state. Thank you.
Representative Cobb, thank you so much for such a wonderful session and all your hard work. Absolutely the most fantastic representative we've ever had.
Okay, and I really err, and I didn't really want to, so hopefully Regina Cobb can come back and talk to us at a later date. All right, we do have a couple of people signed up for Call to Public. One is Wayne Hollins, come on down.
Good morning, Chairman and Supervisors. My name is Wayne Hollins, 4825 North Mormon Flat Road, Golden Valley, Arizona. Again, I'm down here to speak about illegal dumping. The problem is, it hasn't stopped since the last time I was here. And going out and investigating a dumping on private property and then simply leaving it there after the investigation, for it to blow into the next county, that doesn't work. Wind blows north and south, and that makes us a very big county to blow trash out of. So, we need to do something. I'm, I'm doing the best I can, and I think the county can step up and help us out to do that, because it's not your problem, it's not my problem, it's the whole entire county's problem. If we work together, we can make some headway. If we don't, we're just going to be buried in trash again, and I don't want to see that happening because it's too much work to get unburied again. So, I'm still waiting for this meeting that we had two and a half years ago to have a follow-up meeting. I'm not sure what the holdup of that is, but I think it's important to have because we need to find out what we did, what we accomplished since the last time, and where we can move forward at. So, I'd appreciate if we could get something going here and be able to continue cleaning up the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Arthur Garnica?
Yes, my name is Arthur Garnica, I live at 3902 East Packer Keating, Arizona. I was in court on May 31st, and the judge, I was talking to the judge, was telling me that my complaints were criminal, from what the NACFID attorney was saying, that all my things are criminal. And he goes, can you take it to, have you took it to other venues? I said, I brought it to the County Board of Supervisors, but they have done nothing with it. I brought it to Attorney General, that has been done. And then, he said, did you bring it to the county attorneys? I, me and Rick Rapp both looked back and said, yeah, pointing at James Schottman, and he ain't done nothing about it. But, so, what I'm coming to you is, they're saying, their attorney is saying everything is criminal. I brought you guys all the documentation, and all I'm asking for is for you guys to get the documentation I gave to you, to Ryan Espin, because he took complaint from other board members from our NACFID and done something. So that's all I'm asking right now. And then they were saying that, another thing was, that we had, Carl Hayes was illegally appointed to the Board, and he goes, that they said in the court that we had five days to contest that through the elections. I went to the elections before I came down here, and the election says that they have nothing to do with it, that that's between that fireboard, that they got to take care of it. And we, before he got on the Board, we already stated that he couldn't be on our Board because he didn't live in our district. He was trying to say he lived in an airport hangar. So, now, all I'm asking is for you guys to give all my complaints to Ryan Espin, so he can take care of it, because he's took care of stuff before, and you guys have done stuff like with Vic Riccardi, you guys have done stuff before too. So, I'm not asking for no miracle or nothing, I'm just asking for you guys to pass on my paperwork, and if these guys get removed from the Board, I'm asking if you guys can appoint people until we can have a special elections and get new board members on the Board correctly. They're not going to misuse our public monies and elect their friends and stuff. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I have nobody else signed up, but...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have no problem giving that to the county, to our Ryan Espin.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just to be clear, during the Call to the Public, any member of the public may refer the matter to staff, which is exactly what Supervisor Johnson has done, and so we'll take that and review it as Supervisor Johnson has requested.
Okay. Chairman Angus?
Very much.
Chairman Angus, I'd like to ask staff to set up a follow-up meeting with Mr. Hollins and the cactus cleaners and provide us an update and see if there's any way we can go forward doing something different that'd be more effective. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so there's no one signed up, but I'm opening it up if anybody from the audience would like to come up. There are three minutes. Anyone? Okay, I'm going to close the Call to Public. Next, we have presentation. It's a presentation of the 2018 Service Awards to Employees Achieving 15, 20, 30, and 40 Years of Continuous Service to Mojave County. We have HR coming up.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the Board. Mojave County officially recognizes an employee's years of service through the Service Award Program. Without these dedicated employees, we would not be able to stand behind our mission statement and serve the citizens as efficiently and effectively as we do. For 2018, there are 133 employees being awarded for their service to Mojave County. 71 employees served five years of service. 20 employees have served 10 years of service. 16 employees have served 15 years of service. 12 employees have served 20 years of service. Nine employees have served 25 years of service. Four employees have served 30 years of service, and one employee has served 40 years of service. This morning, we will recognize those employees in attendance for 15, 20, 25, 30, and 40 years of service. The Board of Supervisors and Mojave County Management would like to thank you all for all you have done during your years of service and for your ongoing commitment to our success. Thank you for making each day something, a work we can be proud of. For those employees that are here to attend today's presentation, please wait till your name isn't called and then come forward. After all recognition is given, we would like all recipients to meet over at the Rock Wall for a group picture. Certificates will be handed out today, and departments will be sent their service awards once they arrive. I'd like to extend the invitation to board members to please come forward and join us in congratulating our employees. And again, thank you for your dedication to Mojave County. We'll start out with Leroy Albright, 15 years of service. Kip Anderson, 15 years of service. Jill Davis, 15 years of service. Rose Nelson, 15 years of service. Kathleen Sparando, 15 years of service. Byron Stewart, 15 years of service. Tony Wiseman, 15 years of service. Carmen Acosta, 20 years of service. Shay Bracken, 20 years of service. Linda Brinkley, 20 years of service. Nathan McDaniel, 20 years of service. Chris Ballard, 25 years of service. Ken Fielder, 25 years of service. Robert Ballard, 30 years of service. Sonia Herramio, 30 years of service. Melody Jensen, 30 years of service. Thank you all very much. We really appreciate your service to the county. We didn't miss anybody, right?
Forty years. She's not here, unless she's here?
Jill Davis, Jill Davis for 40 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Smile. I'm sure she's here. Just a presentation? All right. Okey-dokey.
Thank you.
Anything that's working for us, not in the future.
Thank you, everybody.
Jill Davis, that's 15 years now. I can't believe that.
Okay, we're going to go on to the consent agenda now. The consent agenda, items 5 through 39, will be considered as a group and acted upon by one motion minus any items pulled for discussion. Supervisor Watson.
I have none this morning. Thank you, Chairman.
Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Item 7.
That's it?
That's it.
Oh. Supervisor Bishop.
Item number 39, please.
Okay, and Supervisor Johnson.
Nothing.
Okay, and I've been asked to pull 22. So I need a motion?
The Chair make a motion to approve the consent minus 7, 22, and 39.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item 7, approve and accept the warranty deed and dedication from Angle Land Development LLC of a 14.64 acre parcel within the ranch at Long Mountain. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm curious how the part, how does the county benefit by accepting a wash? And what, do we then accept the liability for anything that happens to this wash?
Chairman Angus, Supervisor Gould, this wash here is, it's part of the rattlesnake wash. Generally, flood control will accept easements dedications for regional washes, which this would, this would fall under that category. We bring it into our maintenance program and ensure that, basically that that wash is maintained so as not to harm any of the neighboring properties.
And that's maintained with flood control?
It is, that's correct.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, anyone else? Need a motion?
Madam Chairman, I move that item 7 be adopted.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Now, I've been asked to take item 22 by Ryan Esplin. So Mr. Esplin?
Thank you, Chairman. The statute for this one, that's, I believe it's 4283, if I remember, it actually requires a three-week notice. I didn't catch that earlier. We gave a two-week notice, which is the standard protocol that we do, but this one, by statute, just required a three-week notice, and so we're asking to continue this so that we can accomplish the three-week notice on that.
Okay, so I need a motion to continue item 22?
Motion to continue.
Let's continue to the July 1st meeting.
Okay. I'll second the motion.
I believe we have a motion, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And item 39, which is to approve the appointment of Becky Fawson to the 2020 Census Complete Count Committee representing District 4. Supervisor Bishop.
Chairman Angus, I pulled this because the background investigation has not been completed yet, so I would like to make a motion that we approve this contingent on the background investigation.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Onto public hearings. I'm going to open the public hearing for Agenda Item 40A, which is a discussion and possible action to approve the reconsiderations, just a reconsideration of item 34 from the March 4th, 2019 Board of Supervisors Meeting about a rezone. Some people have signed up to speak. This is just about the reconsideration. If you have something to say about the item itself, it would probably be better for 40B. So does anybody want to speak to the reconsideration that's signed up? Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing. I need a motion on this.
Yes, Madam Chairman. I'd like to approve the reconsideration for item number 34 from the March 4th. I believe that we'd be hearing this on June, July 1, I believe.
Okay, I'll second that. There's a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Okay, so item, is this, this is a public hearing, too? No, just if reconsidered approved. So this item is to set a public hearing on July 1st, 2019, to ensure statutory publication requirements are met for discussion and possible action to approve the adoption of Board of Supervisor Resolution Number 2019-018, which is a rezone of Assessor's Parcel Number 402-32225 from an AR Agricultural Residential Zone to a C-2H Highway Commercial Zone to allow for an RV park development and possible indoor storage in the Beaver Dam, vicinity of Mojave County, Arizona.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So moved?
Second. Okay, there's a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Okay, so item, is this, this is a public hearing, too? No, just if reconsidered approved. So this item is to set a public hearing on July 1st, 2019, to ensure statutory publication requirements are met for discussion and possible action to approve the adoption of Board of Supervisor Resolution Number 2019-021. Now, again, I do have a few people signed up, and I think probably it will be better, well, maybe at this one, Supervisor, this is kind of an unusual group.
Yes, it is unusual, and I would like to say that the applicants have provided and done all the additional items that we've requested for that, so with that, I'll make a motion to, to approve.
Hold up. Chairman, if I could just interject, we need to close the public meeting first before we make a motion.
Okay, so there are some people who want to speak. What would be the appropriate place?
They're welcome to speak today. The issue is whether to reconsider this item, and they're welcome to speak. It's an open public meeting, we're making it open, the public can come and speak on it, and then allow them to speak, and then close the public hearing.
Okay, so since we're still in the public hearing, if anyone who signed up, I have a few people who are in favor, and it, it kind of went that way for the last one, does anybody want to speak? Sure, certainly.
And really, the issue is whether to reconsider the motion, to bring it back before the board.
Yeah, my name's Monty Holm, and thank you for bringing this forward again. We have tried to do everything that has been asked of us up there, and we've had meetings with Supervisor Watson, and we've tried to make sure that we've mitigated issues with local residents as best we can. We have about 70 acres right there off the freeway, and we're just trying to do a few little things there, and we have a list of, I think it's 30 or 40 local residents that like what we're doing and excited about it, and then there's a couple that are not real pleased with it. So our hope is that you will reconsider it and that we can get that approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we're still in the public hearing? If anybody would like to speak on this? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. And I think we have a...
Motion to approve the reconsideration for July 1st.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried unanimously. Agenda item 41B, since the reconsideration was approved, to set a public hearing on July 1st, 2019, to ensure statutory publication requirements are met for discussion and possible action, approve the adoption of Board Supervisor Resolution Number 2019-021. I don't think I have anybody to speak. Would anybody like to speak on this item 42A? We're in public hearing. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Madam Chairman, motion to approve for reconsideration? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Item 42A, open the public hearing, discussion and possible action to approve the reconsideration of item 36 from the March 4th, 2019 Board of Supervisors Meeting. An open public hearing, discussion, possible action, approve the adoption of Board of Supervisor Resolution Number 2019-022, which is a special use permit. I don't think I have anybody to speak. Would anybody like to speak on this item 42A? We're in public hearing. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
Madam Chairman, motion to approve for reconsideration?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Agenda item 42B, since the reconsideration was approved, this is to set a public hearing on July 1st, 2019, to ensure statutory publication requirements are met for discussion and possible action to approve the adoption of Board Supervisor Resolution Number 2019-022.
Madam Chairman, motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, item 43 was pulled by staff, so we'll go on to Agenda Item 44. I'm going to open the public hearing for discussion and possible action, adoption of Board of Supervisor Resolution Number 2019-058. It's a rezone of Assessor's Parcel Number 306-66-097 from an AR 25A Agricultural Residential 25-acre minimum lot size zone to an AR 5A Agricultural Residential 5-acre minimum lot size. I don't believe I have anybody signed up to speak. Would anybody like to speak on item 44? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
Chairman Angus, I make a motion to approve. Item 44 is written.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item 45, I'm opening the public hearing, discussion and possible action, adoption of Board of Supervisor Resolution Number 2019-059, which is a rezone of Assessor's Parcel Number 206-16-010 and 019 from an AR Agricultural Residential Zone to a C-2H Highway Commercial Zone. Anyone wish to speak to item 45? I do actually have somebody signed up to speak if they'd like to. David Newberry?
I just have questions in regard to what's going to happen when that truck stops. I live up on Blake Ranch Road and McCarrill Road, and I just need to kind of know what's going to happen there. Are they going to get rid of the eyesore and improve the area, or what are they going to do? I know you guys can answer questions, I guess, at this meeting, but I'm concerned about transients, trash, that we have a no idle truck stop, water usage, dark night skies, Blake Ranch Road, the maintenance thereof in regard to truck traffic, fire protection inasmuch as there's no fire protection at Blake Ranch Road. MEC, will they be able to provide the power for this thing? My power went out this morning, and the mailboxes and the bus stop at Blake Ranch Road and I-40, those are my concerns.
Chairman Angus?
And is there a general plan available that man can see what they're going to do, or is there any...
Okay, I'm going to break the rules and answer my question. And then we'll call up our Development Services to, maybe they can answer some of your questions.
I do appreciate that.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am?
Does anyone else have anything to say about item 45? Then I'm going to close the public hearing and open it up for discussion. Mr. Walsh?
Chairman Angus, I believe this particular rezone is the one at Shinnarump and I-40, just for clarification.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman Angus, Supervisor Bishop, that's correct. This item 45 is for a rezone for the Shinnarump, off of Shinnarump. The following two, I believe, is what the gentleman is referring to.
Oh, okay, so do you understand that, sir? So we'll get to the next one, and hopefully we'll answer your questions. Does anyone have questions for him about 45? Okay, thank you. So I did close the public hearing, I believe.
Chairman Angus, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Agenda item 46, I'm going to open the public hearing, discussion and possible action, adoption of Board Supervisor Resolution Number 2019-060, which is a rezone of Assessor's Parcel Number 354-37-074C and 354-22-006 from a C-2/10A general commercial 10-acre minimum lot size and C-220M general commercial. And so this gentleman, you already spoke. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to item 46? Hearing seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Now, Mr. Walsh?
Chairman Angus, excuse me, Chairman Angus, members of the board, I'll put up here, this is in your backup, but just so the audience has it as well, this is a proposed site plan as part of the rezone. The rezone right now would just address allowing for the development of the site. Following the rezone, a site plan will need to be submitted, and at that point, we'll be able to work with the applicant on what exactly the plans are. But as you can see, there are a portion of some of the buildings that are planning to be removed in order to allow for the new development. It's unclear at this time with this site plan whether the remaining buildings further back will be removed at this point, or how that'll be addressed, but that will all be addressed during our site plan review process.
Does this come before the board again?
The site plan will not. That's done administratively.
No, but at any point, I just want to make sure this gentleman's questions are answered. Will it public? Have any other time to ask questions?
The rezone would be the time to get those questions addressed. I'd be happy to meet with this gentleman after the meeting and address any of his questions.
Okay, sorry to interrupt you, sir. Very good, thank you.
Madam Chairman, if I could...
Oh, you want to say?
Question, please.
Okay.
Mr. Walsh, what requirements will we have on this piece of property to be cleaned up properly?
Chairman Angus, Supervisor Watson, yes, basically as part of the site plan process, they'll need to come in, they'll show us what they're proposing. We'll look at that in reference to our zoning ordinance and the site plan requirements as approved in the zoning ordinance.
So you'll be addressing all the buildings on the property, is that correct?
We'll be addressing the proposed development, but yes, as the property as a whole, we'll be looking at that as well as any zoning violations would hold up any site plan approvals.
So you'll be taking a good, hard look at some of the buildings that have not been in good repair for a number of years?
Definitely.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, anyone else have any questions? Mr. Walsh?
Motion to approve.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Agenda item 47, open public hearing, discussion and possible action, adoption of Board of Supervisor Resolution Number 2019-061, which is a rezone of Assessor's Parcel Number 354-21-002. Anyone like to speak to item 47? Anyone? Hearing and seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve item 47.
I'll second the motion.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Item carries. Item 48, I'm opening the public hearing, discussion and possible action, approve the adoption of Mojave County Ordinance Number 2019-001, amending Section 5.1.D.5.B. and Section 1.10B of the Mojave County Land Division Regulations to reduce some of the improvement requirements for qualifying rural subdivisions of 10-acre or greater lots. Anyone want to speak to 48? Anyone? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Need a motion?
Chairman Angus, I'll make a motion to approve this based on the recommendations of added in zoning.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And item 49, going to open the public hearing, discussion and possible action, changes and/or rescission of ordinance 2016-05 that created munico and replace it with the original source ordinance is passed by the supervisors, and this was continued by us at our May 6th meeting. Anyone want to speak? 49? Municode lovers? Anyone? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve item 47.
I'll second the motion.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Item carries. Item 48, I'm opening the public hearing, discussion and possible action, approve the adoption of Mojave County Ordinance Number 2019-001, amending Section 5.1.D.5.B. and Section 1.10B of the Mojave County Land Division Regulations to reduce some of the improvement requirements for qualifying rural subdivisions of 10-acre or greater lots. Anyone want to speak to 48? Anyone? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Need a motion?
Chairman Angus, I'll make a motion to approve this based on the recommendations of added in zoning.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And item 49, going to open the public hearing, discussion and possible action, changes and/or rescission of ordinance 2016-05 that created munico and replace it with the original source ordinance is passed by the supervisors, and this was continued by us at our May 6th meeting. Anyone want to speak? 49? Municode lovers? Anyone? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Uh-oh, what? Madam Chair, supervisors, we had asked for this to be continued so that we can kind of come up with a plan, so that we could put something together to replace munico. So after meeting with County Manager's Office, IT, working with Ryan as well, what we would like to do is we came up with something similar to, kind of like the agenda console to some degree, we can have IT build us like an ordinance console where we can put the ordinances in there, where they will all be searchable by Word. So what we'd like to do is to have time to put it all together, because there is quite a bit of work involved with that, that we would like until the second meeting in October so that we can come back and demonstrate what we've put together so that you guys can make an informed decision on which way you'd like to go while at the same time working with County Attorney's Office, because I believe there's a handful of ordinances that would need a little tweaking to go back to the original ordinance that was approved.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have questions for our clerk?
I have a comment. Thank you, Madam Chairman. That sounds like a great plan. If we're going to have laws, the public ought to be able to know what laws that they are held to account for. Laws should be easily understood, and should be written in plain language so that everybody can understand it, because we live in a republic and form a government, and that's how our government was structured. But that sounds like a great plan. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for a little history, when we first came here, when I first came here in 2012, we didn't have anything really. It was not codified, which is a word that I learned while I was doing it, and, you know, we had the best of intentions. know, we had the best of intentions, we tried to do what the cities were doing, but for us, it just really didn't work out the way we had hoped, and so, it's been a long process, and I want to thank you and Nathan for, you know, doing all this hard work. So, with that, I guess I need a motion to continue this October 21st.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, off to our regular agenda now. Agenda item 50, which is to approve the appointments of Republican Precinct Committee Men. This was continued from our May 6th meeting. I do have somebody signed up to speak, and that is Mr. Steve Robinson.
Stephen Robinson, 5373, Highway 68 in Golden Valley, mailing address. I've gone through this list, and the one person I wrote to Mr. Espin about was Roger Gorham, because he had been approved as a PC appointment by this board in previous seasons with that address on Pierce Ferry Road. When I spoke with him last Thursday, I think it was, he acknowledged that his address on Rancho Road that I gave to Mr. Espin is his actual physical address, but he doesn't receive mail there. So, I told him, I was hoping he'd make it here today, so that you would go ahead and approve, because I gave Mr. Espin his actual physical address, that is where he really lives, on Rancho Road. So, the others, you know, the other two came from District 2, not from our District 1. So, the other issue I want to address is it was said at the May 6th meeting that the email addresses and phone numbers of PC applicants should be made part of the public record. Well, when you look at the partisan nomination form, it asks for your residence address, asks for a mailing address. Nowhere on that partisan nomination form to be elected to the Board of Supervisors does it require the listing of your phone number or email address. Candidates obviously give that information out to the public, but sometimes they give a burner phone or something else. They don't give their private emails. PCs are volunteers. They don't want to give and make their personal phone numbers and their personal email addresses part of the public record. So, that's why I developed that second page, where that information could be provided to the county committee, but not necessarily made part of the public record, to protect the privacy of our volunteers. I just had two delightful ladies today speak and say they'd love to volunteer, but they may not want their phone numbers made part of the public record. So, in whatever you're trying to do to set up to make sure that these prospective PCs are, first off, registered by their party, second, that they are indeed registered, I still recommend keeping their personal information private for their often safety and security. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, there's no one else signed up to speak? Anybody want to talk? All right, so, this item is to approve the appointment of Republican Precinct Committee Men, but there were, as Mr. Robinson said, there were a few that had some issues, and that's one of the reasons that this was continued, it was asked that it now gets a second look over by the county, and somebody questioned me as to, well, why does the county do this when you do do that nominating petition, the county doesn't go over names, making sure they're correct? And I think the short answer to that is that the Board of Supervisors does not accept those nominating petitions. We do, however, accept this, and we do want to make sure, if I put my vote on it, that the information is correct. So, with that, so what's, Ryan, what is the issue with Roger Gorham? Are we going to not approve him this time, or...
Well, let me kind of go through real quick, just the legal background. In order to, for the legal qualifications for a precinct committeeman, they must be a member of the recognized political party. In Arizona, we have two that are recognized, I believe, for the ballot, it's the Republican Party and the Democratic Party. Two, they also must be registered to vote, and three, they must live in the precinct. So, those are the three basic qualifications. Registered to vote, you have to be at least 18 years of old and so forth, there's various different basic requirements. So, what I did was I just, and I appreciate so much, both the Elections Department and the Recorder's Office, Kristi Blair, and then also Nancy in the Elections Department were very helpful in this, in talking about the issues here. Looking over the list, there were, and I'm just looking at the basic qualifications is all I did, registered to vote, are they registered as a Republican, and do they live in the precinct? Those are the three things, at least, did they give a residential address in the precinct? I didn't go to the actual locations and knock on the door, anything like that. And so, what I found was, all but three are qualified to serve as precinctmen. One is not registered to vote, the other one is not registered in the Republican Party, and then the third one was Mr. Gorham. Mr. Gorham had provided a mailing address. Mr. Robinson graciously provided additional information to verify where he lives, and Mr. Gorham's residential address is in the precinct.
Okay, so you're comfortable with us going forward?
I am comfortable with Mr. Gorham, however, I would ask and recommend that Mr. Gorham update his voter registration, if he hasn't already. He may have already done that, because you have to verify your mailing address and your physical address, so.
Okay.
But other than that, the other two, though, let me pull up my notes.
It's David Cummings and Sally Green.
Yeah, by statute, they're not eligible to serve. One was not registered to vote, the other one not registered in the Republican Party.
Okay, very good. So, I need a motion.
Chairman, before we do that, too, just, I would just suggest, you know, and talking with Kristi Blair, we do not want this to be a big burden on anybody involved, both the county, as well as the precincts and the people who run the various parties, but we strongly recommend that you go to the Recorder's Office, and the Recorder can verify that somebody is registered to vote and which political party they live in. It's not a huge burden on the Recorder's Office, I already talked to Kristi about it, and it can be done fairly quick, before it's submitted to the clerk of the board, they can go over onto the second floor and verify that the person is registered to vote and in the particular party, and then it can go on to the clerk of the board. So, just a recommendation that the parties do that, so.
So, just the political parties just need to be informed about what the kind of new process is?
They should just do that, it's just a good practice, just to say, hey, you know, verify those things before it's submitted to the clerk of the board.
Okay, very good. So, I need a motion.
Chairman Angus, I'll make the motion. I make a motion that we approve the appointment of the listed following Republican Precinct Committeeman, with the exception of Mr. David Cummings and Ms. Sally Green.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 51, approve the resignation of Republican Precinct Committee Men. Mr. Robinson, you're signed up, is it vital? You have earth-shattering information for us?
I do. In October, before Supervisor Gould was on the board, there was a situation where someone's names were presented for resignation, and it was based upon a signature of the district director. I questioned it, because I had spoken to the candidate, or the PCs, that he said, no, they hadn't at that time intended to move out of the area. I believe that the law requires that if they move out of the area, and you can validate it, like Mr. Rodriguez, and I'm sorry to miss him, he's a great young man, that they are no longer eligible to be a PC. Cosette Biggs, Andy Biggs' daughter, and Patrick Finard, her husband, have moved to Gilbert, even though they haven't changed their registration, and I have screenshots of conversations with them saying they had. So, that's why I submitted it without their resignation. A question I have for the attorney, maybe he can answer it, because it's in regards to that, if a PC changes his registration from Republican to either PND or another party, does he at that point immediately cease to be a PC by statute?
I'd have to research it, I can meet with you afterwards.
Okay.
I mean, I don't want to give you, I don't know the answer right now, but I'd have to look at it, and we can talk about it afterwards.
Okay, then another question I would encourage you to consider, is this county committee, like any other committees, is a statutory organization and a body with bylaws, as Supervisor Johnson addresses in a later issue. Those bylaws, the question, are, if the county committee is a statutory committee, are those bylaws legally enforceable in a court of law, that they be followed by the committee itself? That's a question I have, and probably would be another one for us to consider, because there's a, one of the positions in our bylaws requires approval for any PCs of the district director, as well as the party chairman. So, maybe we can talk about that later. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I need a motion.
Chairman Angus, I will make a motion that we accept the resignation of Republican Precinct Committeeman, Adam Rodriguez.
I'll second the motion.
If we can have further discussion on that?
Yes.
I have been able, since I wrote the memo, that is the backup, I've talked with Mr. Robinson, and he's provided me a screenshot verifying that Patrick Finard has moved from the area as well, so I'd recommend that Patrick also be removed, and I think it's fair to say that Cosette has moved as well. I believe they live together, and so, I'd also recommend that you include those two as well, because they've moved from the precinct. If they've moved from the precinct, they're no longer eligible to serve as committeeman.
Okay. I can amend my motion, but my thought is that they haven't re-registered to vote, they're still registered to vote, even though they don't have residency here. I'd like to put it off until they change their residency on their voter registration, because nobody's really talked to them, other than text messages, so.
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay. So, what do you want to do, how do you want to amend your motion?
I don't think she wants to amend her motion.
I will withdraw my motion, let somebody else make the motion, because I'm not comfortable with that.
I agree with Supervisor Bishop, this is not a volunteer position, it's an elected position, as much as same as we are, unless we get something in writing, you know, from that person that we can verify, and I don't know, but maybe should be notarized if you're removing somebody from office, because there could be, you know, somebody who submits something on one of our behalves, or something, and signs a name, and it's done, so.
Okay.
I would just go with the one that Mr. Espin, the first one he recommended.
All right, so, everything's been retracted, and so, you want to continue this?
It's up to you if you want to make a motion, we have no motions on the floor right now.
Okay.
So, it's up to, if any member of the board here wishes to make a motion, whether to be a motion to continue it, or a motion to accept a resignation of one, or two, or three, or none, whatever you wish to do.
All right, Supervisor Johnson, you want to take a stab at?
Which person did you have written?
Adam Rodriguez, we've confirmed.
Oh, so your original motion?
That was...
Yeah. I make a motion to approve the removal of the person that Mr. Espin just identified.
I'll second it.
We could have just saved five minutes on this one. Okay, we have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, item 52 is brought to us by Public Works, and it's a discussion of possible action to accept Bureau of Land Management Arizona Strip Field Office, May 9th, 2019, notice of termination for recreation and public purposes, lease AZA-030895-01. Any discussion? I actually have a question. And, Mr. Lutowski? So, in the backup, let me see. We had the letters from the Department of the Interior, and it basically said, unless I'm reading incorrectly, that they sent us letters, but we never responded.
Madam Chair, members of the board, correct, as of June, as of April 3rd, 2007, the BLM provided correspondence to the county, and this is the Arizona Strip Office, by the way, provided correspondence to the county, putting us on notice that the property is in non-compliance with regard to the contemplated future development of a cemetery. And what I mean by non-compliance is that there was certain timeframe parameters by which the original RP&amp;P lease, when it was issued in 2003, had in association with moving forward on a cemetery development, and given the fact that we had come up upon the, well, the year of 2017, BLM took the initiative to reach out to the county, and again, remind the county of its responsibility to push forward a development plan, and actually submit a development plan. But this was the first, when I refer to the current May 9th, 2019, a letter of termination, this is really the first action that BLM is contemplating, taking. So, if the county remains silent on this notice of termination, then the notice and the termination will actually move ahead.
Madam Chairman, maybe I can add a little bit to that. Originally, the county, there was a leader in the community, a very good gentleman up there, that had a vision that the community up there would have a cemetery, and he had asked the Board of Supervisors to hold that land in trust until an entity would evolve or develop that could take over the responsibilities for that cemetery. So, the county, at no cost to the county, has been doing that. You know, we made the application, or assisted in the application, and then took the lease from the BLM, in hopes that there would be an entity who would want to step forward and take over that cemetery. And since there's been a lot of attempts to find that entity, whether it be a chamber or a fire district, or something, some pseudo-government or pseudo-governmental agency, and to this date, there has been no takers, and the BLM is at the point now that either we provide an entity to take it over, either we provide the management of the cemetery, or we turn it back over to the BLM, and right now, we're asking the board to turn it back over to the BLM. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, thank you. Yes, it is in my district, and we have been trying to pursue someone that would help us out on that, we've found no one to want us to take on that responsibility, so, it's with kind of a great deal of trepidation, but I think it's probably the best thing to do, is to let it go back.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
So, with that, Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the Bureau of Land Management notice of termination.
What was the second? Okay, we have motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 53, discussion of possible action, acknowledge receipt of and refer to Public Works for staff evaluation, and recommendation for future board discussion of possible action, tertiary road maintenance petition to Mahvi County Board of Supervisors. I do have somebody signed up to speak, and Steve Greeley?
The neighbors up in Shadow Canyon got together and circulated a petition to ask for consideration that grading be done on the road from Calum Morales, right off of Stockton Hill Road, that goes back into residential areas of the canyon. A neighboring canyons, there's about 10 or 12 of them, get road service provided by the county. We're looking for tertiary service a couple of times a year. What's kind of unique about the canyon that we live in is that it's got, for argument's sake, a thoroughfare, if you will, it's a pretty wide dirt road, and as you travel in towards the canyon, it gets a little narrower, then it goes up to the residential areas, to the homes, but that road is the only road that you can get to Chiron Peak, so it gets a lot of use by non-residents. We get off-road use by ATVs, motorcycles, people trailing their horses to go horseback riding, which is fine, but it's the only way that somebody can get up to the BLM property of Chiron Peak, which has sanctuaries up there, watering holes for wildlife and things like that. So, we thought, after all these years of doing it ourselves, that we would ask the county for consideration for grading that road. It's approximately two miles that we're looking for, and as I mentioned, a couple of times a year.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a question, is there not a natural spring up in that area as well?
There is.
Thank you.
Yes, there is. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this is just to acknowledge receipt of and refer to Public Works for evaluation.
Chairman Angus, there are no other speakers. I'd like to make a motion that we approve accepting and acknowledging the receipt of and refer to Public Works for staff to evaluate and make recommendations. and make recommendations.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Four to one. Onto item 54, discussion of possible action to approve the adoption of Board of Supervisor Resolution, number 2019-062, accepting the road maintenance petition request that Lawton Road from Ron Lane to South Feeder Drive, a length of one mile, be accepted into Mojave County Road Maintenance Program for Tertiary Maintenance in the Yucca area of Mojave County. Any discussion or motion? It's in your district, Supervisor Gold?
Turn my mic on. My move that item 54 be adopted.
Second the motion?
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Agenda item 55, sitting as Board Directors for the Golden Valley Improvement District, number one of Mojave County, Arizona, discussion of possible action to approve the adoption of the VID Resolution, number 2019-02, and accept the owner's request for property addition to the Golden Valley Improvement District, number one. Supervisor Bishop?
This is in my district, but we all sit as directors on the Jeep, on the Golden Valley Water Board. But I do think this is a good move, and I make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item 56 was brought to us by the presiding judge, Judge Gertler, and it's a discussion of possible action to approve the amendment and modification to the intergovernmental agreement, excuse me, buy-in between Lake Havasu City and Mojave County regarding the deconsolidation with an effective date of August 31, 2019. I believe we spoke about this at a previous meeting or workshop. Does anyone have any questions for Judge Gertler? Okay, and maybe a motion's in order?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It was nice watching you walk down here, though, Judge.
Attorney that didn't get to speak.
Okay, item 57, brought to us by the county manager, discussion of possible action, it's wrong with my voice, authorize the operation of the county's Kingman-based animal control shelters to be brought in-house, effective July 1, 2019, to ensure seamless operation, authorize the creation of the appropriate classification codes to staff the shelter, and authorize recruitment utilizing Section 1.2 of the personnel policies and procedures. Before we discuss this, I do have somebody signed up to speak, and that is Lynn, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce your last name, Kat, let me take a stab, Candy, Candy Anan? That's it? Your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. My name is Lynn Candy Anan, 3472 Monte Moro Street, Kingman, Arizona. Good morning, Madam Chair and Board Members. I have lived in Kingman, Arizona, for over 25 years. Since my retirement in 2014, my life has been devoted to the, to help the unloved, forgotten, and discarded animals of Mojave County, and I thank you for allowing me to speak today. We know that there is a desperate need for a new shelter in Kingman, and I want to thank you for putting that item on the agenda, and I encourage the board to move forward with the new shelter. I have been on the board of Western Arizona Humane Society for the past four years, and now I served as Director and now as Vice President. I spend a lot of time at the shelter volunteering also. Since the contract with WAS expires on June 30, and no one else has come forward willing to take on the contract, I want to let you know that we are working on an alternate plan. We just need a little more time to put this together. Our endeavor is to create the Mojave County Humane Association. We will obtain our LLC and 501(c)(3), and we are assembling a body of local business leaders to serve as board members. Our commitment will be to save the lives of Mojave County animals and to educate the community on the necessities of spaying and neutering and caring for their animals. We will engage in fundraising events and grant writing to further expand our opportunities to provide the best care for our shelter guests. Our vision is that every animal will be happy at the shelter with good nutrition, exercise, and stimulation as we get them ready for their forever homes, and to enhance the, not only the animals, but also all of Mojave County. So I propose to you, our Board of Supervisors, on behalf of this coalition, that you will be open for us to bid on the contract within six months, therefore alleviating the burden of running the, of the county running the shelter.
Does anybody have any questions?
I do. You said you sat on the board for Western Arizona Humane Society?
Yes, and I realize since, maybe I skipped that part, I'm sorry, but that since the contract with WAS expires on June 30, and no one else has been willing to take on the contract, I just feel that, we feel that it's important for us to create an association to run the shelter.
I'm just confused, because the letter that I read from Patty Gilmore, there was no interest.
Madam Chairman.
No, we are creating.
Madam Chairman, she's going to create a separate entity, separate from WHS, is what she's proposing, I believe.
That's correct. We're going to create, it's not going to be affiliated with WAS. We are going to create, it's going to be called the Mojave County Humane Association.
And you want to bid on this, so we wouldn't have to take it in-house?
Yes, but we're not ready yet. We have to form our 501(c)(3), LLC, and we're still in the process of getting our Board of Directors. We anticipate it to take about six months, and then we want to take over the shelter to alleviate the burden on the county.
Okay, are you still on the Director, Director of WAS?
Well, obviously, I'll be resigning to start this coalition, to start this association.
Mr. Hendricks, what does that mean in terms of, you know, this agenda item and?
Madam Chairman, I believe that they're somewhat mutually exclusive. Today, we're asking the board to approve a plan that would allow the county to take over the operation and maintenance of the shelter. The board, at some future date, whether that be six months, or a year, or whenever, can certainly decide to direct staff to bid out, to ask for an RFP for the operation of the shelter and transition back into either a veterinary service or a humane society operating the shelter, if the board so chose.
Well...
But I don't think we have a choice today if we want to continue operating an animal shelter, to take it over in-house, and to move forward with allowing us to go ahead and staff it and operate it.
How would that work, if you hire people and whatever, and then six months, there's somebody who wants to bid? I mean, it's an either/or in my book. I mean, I don't understand how you could say that you're going to, you know, give you permission to do this, you do all the hiring and everything, and then six months, we're going to put out to bid? That doesn't make sense to me.
Chairman Angus, I think what the county manager is saying is, we can't let things just set in limbo for six months, so we have to, we have to make that decision to take it over or close it down. So I appreciate Lynn bringing this to us.
I just wanted you to be aware that this is something, just to take the burden off the county, that this is something that's being worked on.
So you're saying there's hope in the future, you're working toward a remedy, and you'd like to come back when you're ready?
Yes, he just wanted you to know that it won't be, as far as we would propose, and we would like, that it wouldn't be the burden of the county forever, that someone else is willing to take it over. Because I know the county, if I'm aware, I assume that the county does not want to run the shelter, from everything that I've heard. I just wanted you to be aware that...
All right, thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Sherman. This is good news, actually. I'm glad that somebody's taking a look at taking over the humane society in a WAS-like manner. I think WAS in Lake Havasu does a great job, they do a great job with fundraising. But we really have no choice. We need to take this in-house now, because they may not be able to put a deal together. And then at some future date, they can come and request that, that we put out a request for proposal. At that time, it's going to open it up to other bidders also. And I don't really think this is particularly unusual. But one issue that I would like to remind the board is, I was doing a little checking on humane, or on animal shelters in the county. Lake Havasu, WAS runs Lake Havasu Animal Shelter. They are funded by Lake Havasu City and not funded by the county. Bullhead City has a city animal shelter funded by Bullhead City and not the county. Kingman does not. I need some Kingman participation from their city government, monetary participation, to get me to approve to do anything, because it is unfair for the residents of the other areas of the county to be subsidizing a animal shelter for the Kingman area. The city of Kingman needs to pony up. Thank you.
Thank you, and I agree with you, Supervisor Gold, and we spoke about this in length over the years. A little movement has been made, but like you, not nearly enough. And I do think that Kingman must come to the table and help out on this in more than they have. Okay, anyone else? Supervisor Johnson?
Well, I have the same concerns, what you're talking about, we're probably off the topic that we're here for, but on this topic, I'm concerned that we're bringing this in-house when this is the responsibility of the sheriff. Is there a reason behind that?
Madam Chairman, in reading the statutes, the sheriff has responsibility over animal control, and the sheriff needs a place to deposit his animals, whether the county pays for that or provides it. And what we're talking right now is an animal shelter, not animal control. And in accordance with the statute, the county may operate a pound or animal shelter, that's the word that the statute uses, or they may contract with a city, or with a veterinarian, or with a duly constituted humane society. So those are our options, or I don't believe, unless Attorney Ryan can correct me, if the county is actually obligated to do a pound, I think that's a "may" in the statute. Thank you.
The way I read it is, it says we are, the sheriff is obligated to keep the animals for three days. That's it. That's what we do. We run animal control. And if we want to have, or if the areas want to have a humane society, then that's up to them. Lake Havasu just did over a million and some dollars in fundraising. I'm not sure about the other cities. So I think that's what our decision has to be. If we bring these people in, the concern I have is, previously, years and years ago, when the county ran it all themselves, the animal control, right now, we're hiring is more people that are looking to run a humane society. Before, they were all animal control officers, and they're probably, one of them was, one or so might have been administrator or something. But I think that's the decision we have to make, because we're looking at a tremendous amount of outlay of money, and it's something that we have to look forward to, you know, see how we're going to fund that.
Supervisor Watson?
Well, I certainly believe that Lake Havasu City and Bullhead City have done a wonderful job in their areas. The city of Kingman has been woefully behind in this endeavor. And I think we should reach out to the city of Kingman and see what interest we can get from the current mayor and city council. This needs to be, I believe, a little bit more of a partnership than Mojave County taking this past animal control. I agree with Supervisor Johnson that we do have a responsibility for the first three, 72 hours, I believe, of the capture. But after that, going on to the pound or a adoption center is kind of an area that we should be speaking to the city of Kingman about. It's time for those people to raise up to that problem.
Thank you. Now that you talk about it, you're correct, in Bullhead City, they are officers. They're not, it's not a humane society or anything like that. They hold them for 72 hours, whatever they do, but it's not like how we've been running it. So again, I don't like, again, growing government, and, you know, all the people, and then the retirements and the benefits, and so, just for the public, because I know we have it in our backup, but how much were we paying Western Arizona to do everything except, you know, we had the building for them?
We were paying WHS $260,000 a year, and in your budget, we provided a budget that stated that the fees were around $160,000 that we would be, that are taken in, that we believe that in kind, our material donations would be about $25,000. There was about $5,000 cash, but we weren't counting on, in the budget process, a lot of donations. And bottom line was $450,000 that it would cost for us to run that shelter, but that did not take into consideration, and we didn't include subtracting out the $260,000 that we pay WHS to offer, operate the shelter. And we didn't include any substantial estimates for accepting donations for the operation of that shelter. So total bottom line on the operation without the donation, that it would cost the county to operate a shelter exclusive of any donations, except for what I mentioned previously, would be about, I believe, $170,000, if my memory serves me correctly. So that's what you're deciding on today.
I have a question, Madam Chair. Are you talking shelter or animal control now?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, what we're proposing to the board today is to take over the operations and maintenance of the current animal shelter that WAS was currently operating. That's what's in front of you today.
I guess to make it clear for me, WAS was handling our three days, and then out of their own money, handling the rest, correct?
Madam Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, this is my understanding, and take it for what it's worth, that WAS was handling the three days and the adoptions, trying to be a no-kill shelter with all of their donations, Mojave County's $260,000, and whatever they were able to raise, I'm sorry, in the donations, and in accordance with their letter, that amount, dollar amount, was inadequate to operate a shelter, and they were losing money, and that was one of the reasons that they had the constrination of continuing with the contract.
Who kept the fees?
Well, Madam Chairman, WAS kept all the fees. Mojave County didn't receive any fees.
And how much was that?
I believe that's in the neighborhood, my staff said it was in the neighborhood of $160,000.
I would guess our decision is, if we're going to move ahead, are we moving ahead as a humane society, or as a, you know, what your statutory required to do is animal control? We do animal control, I think we should change the people we're hiring to be more, because we only have five animal control officers in the county. There's a sixth one in part-time in Colorado City or that area, but it's not filled. I don't really know how five guys, or girls, whatever they are, handle, handle the whole county now. And I would think we'd be better off by hiring, because the animal control officer can obviously clean the cages and do that sort of thing. We'll need obviously an admin person, but that would be my, if we're going to bring it in and not have the sheriff handling it.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
I agree with Supervisor Johnson that we need to define the parameters of exactly what we're going to do. Either it's 72 hours for our statutory requirements, or we run an animal control shelter. But I think before we make any of those decisions, we should certainly talk to the people, the city of Kingman, to see where their input is. The city of Kingman has license fees and other revenues that can cover some of these costs. We, I think we should take a good look and see what is available through possibly an IGA or the cooperation.
And Madam Chairman, at least... And Madam Chairman, at least, at least, that question has been asked informally, and the city certainly had a chance to step up and participate. And at least at this time, it's been kind of, I wish you let county response, not to disparage the city at all, but I wanted to be clear with the Board of Supervisors that any agreement with the city is going to take some time and be a difficult one, if at all. And so if we go down that path, if I am unable to produce something, that shelter closes July 1. The door shuts July 1 of this year.
Madam, Madam Chairman, it's obvious that we need to continue to run the operation. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to...
I'm still need to discuss, I'm still open for discussion, because I still want to talk about it, if that's okay.
Okay, I'll withhold the motion.
Okay. Before Lynn got up here, I really thought we had no options. And again, because you're correct, that the only obligation is to be, you know, to hold as an animal control, but our want is for it to be more of a working shelter through a humane society. So I think if there's a chance that that could happen, I'd like to make whatever we do today easier for a transition when the time comes. I mean, there's another item we're going to be talking about in a few minutes, about actually building one, and that's always been sort of a problem with getting people to take care of it, right? Because it's always been about the building. So this, whatever we decide here, is going to affect that as well.
Madam Chairman, that's a very good point. I have no idea how that animal shelter item is going to play out, but let's assume that it plays out positively for the construction of a new animal shelter. Quite possibly, that would play into what we're doing today, that we would continue to operate the animal shelter if the board so chose, and hire the staff to be able to operate it. And once we have a new facility constructed, like I said, if that's what the board so chose, then at that time, we could bid out the operation of that new facility.
So the people you hire with this agenda item, they would, we'd be able to let them go? I mean, once they're hired, it's kind of hard to do that, isn't it?
Madam Chairman, if there's no positions available, they would be let go. And/or, you know, it's similar to this picture that I'm going to briefly paint right now, is my hopes, when we open up the positions, if the board chooses to continue to operate the animal shelter, that we will have some of those experienced people apply for those positions, so that we continue to operate seamlessly. That's what I'm hoping. Same way, if you decide to build a new animal shelter, some of the reasons that WAHS proposed that they didn't want to bid on the shelter operations this year surrounds, the reason is surrounded by the lack of a decent facility. So I believe that if we construct a new animal shelter, that not only will this group want to propose on it, if they are able to form here in Kingman, but it might be that WHS has renewed interest in operating a shelter and would also propose on it, because we'd have a decent facility then.
Right.
So, and then the board would have a choice, a business choice, on who you wanted to go with. There might even be additional people, maybe from out of the county, like we did have some interest from the Coconino Humane Society that decided not to propose on our animal shelter, and Yavapai's Humane Society showed interest in the past. So I agree with Supervisor Johnson, the board has to make a business decision on, are we running a shelter? Are we going to continue to run a shelter? Are we going to run a pound? A animal control facility? And, you know, if the answer is to continue to operate a shelter for a limited period of time, or an extended period of time, the proposal's setting in front of you today.
Is there any drawback to hiring people on a contract basis, instead of starting a whole thing without knowing what's going to happen really in the future after, if we choose to go ahead? I mean, we're making this decision now without knowing some of the other things that we're going to be talking about.
And Madam Chairman, my staff and I tried to be as thorough as possible to provide you with a solution, if you wanted to continue to operate a shelter, to be able to be up and operational, and try to be as seamless as possible on July 1. And I think that's what we placed in front of you. If we try to do something different, you know, there's always unintended consequences. We'd have to develop contracts for the contract employees, or have to, I'm not sure how I would be putting that together if we went that direction.
Madam Chair, I think we'd be going the wrong way with a contract. I understand what you're trying to do, but this might sound heartless, but if you have a contract, we'd have to give it for six months, a year, something like that. If we hire somebody and the job goes away, their job goes away. That's just a chance you take by taking it. But I think we're, if we hire these people today, we are doing humane society work the way we're doing it. And if we approve those positions, if we go with animal control officers, then we're going with what statute says we have to do. Because the talk, while it's on a different item, is, oh, we'll build a new shelter, and then somebody will come and take it. Well, that's not how it's done in other places. Humane societies build their own. They're separate from us. They don't have government money building their facilities. Sorry, that's all.
Supervisor Bishop?
Well, you know, hearing that conversation, it's really difficult to make this decision until we make a decision on item 59, as to where we're going forward with the building of a new shelter. So I don't know if we could just table this until we discuss 59 and find out where we're going there, and then maybe get back to item 57. But I think the 72-hour statutory limit to hold animals is limited to those that are not licensed or don't have a chip. I think if they have a chip or a license, the time period is extended. But regardless, we do have to make the decision if we're going to be a pound or a care and control humane-type facility for the duration until we build a new shelter. So it's hard for me to really make a good decision on that until we know if we're going forward on building an adequate facility, so.
Okay, Ryan, do you have any insight as to that?
Yeah, so 11, 10, 13, it's the 72 hours that Supervisor Johnson is referring to is stray animals, stray dogs or cats. But if they have, and if they're impounded with a microchip, or wearing a license, or any other discernible form of owner identification, then it's extended to 120 hours. So no ID, no nothing, 72 hours. If they have ID, if they have a license, or some kind of discernible form of ownership of identification, it's 120 hours.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to table this for the time being.
Okay, motion second.
Discussion?
Sure.
Madam Chairman.
Are we going to table it until the vote on 59, or table it? Table it? Because...
Table it can only come back in the same meeting.
Wait, wait, say that again?
Tabling can only come back in the same meeting.
At the same meeting? Okay.
Okay.
All right.
So we'll be coming back at the next meeting?
No.
This meeting?
This meeting.
After we discuss the other agenda item.
Okay.
Oh, I know that.
I just would like to remind everybody, we only have 27 days.
Right, that's why we're going to talk about it.
Has to be decided.
Okay, I'll...
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of tabling this?
Aye.
Okay. Well, let's go on to item 58, which is brought to us by Supervisor Johnson. Discussion and possible action. Direct staff to bring back to the board supervisors at its next regular meeting a detailed mission statement for the 2020 Census Complete Count Committee. That includes the scope of work and authority of the committee along with bylaws. That will include reporting requirements, frequency and location of meetings, and functions and duties of the committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is what we did previous, when we did the BLM lands up here. I thought we need to have these. We have them for all other committees and things that we form, and that way it gives everybody a working knowledge of what they're going to do, and it shouldn't take long to do.
Okay, sounds good. You want to put that in the form of motion?
Make a, I make a motion, direct staff to come back at the next meeting with a mission statement for the, mission statement for the 2020 Census Complete Count Commission. That includes the scope of work and the authority of the commission along with bylaws. That will include reporting requirements, frequency and location of meetings, and the functions and duties of the committee.
Second. You have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries. I've had a request that we take a 10-minute break. Sorry.
Can we hear from the Finance Director so that we can clarify what Supervisor Gold had mentioned?
Good morning Supervisors. Yes, I confirm what Mr. Hendricks stated that the five, that there's 6 million essentially that we plan to or anticipate having by the end of this year, which we were recommending that 5 million of that be placed in the Capital Projects Fund for the construction of a new Mojave County Animal Shelter and direct staff to move forward with the site selection, design process and development of a construction schedule for the shelter to be built on county-owned property.
You brought this?
Yes, I did bring this and I'm very much in support of Mojave County building a new shelter. I think the time is now. We have the funding, we have the desire, we have the community's support, and I would like to ask my fellow board members to please, after a bit of discussion, consider supporting the building of a new Mojave County Care and Control Facility.
Okay. I'm sorry Supervisor Watson, I did not know your time was limited.
That's fine, thank you.
So, would you like to speak to this?
Thank you very much Chairman Angus. I am too, very much in support of Mojave County in this endeavor. Also, would like to reiterate to the folks in the audience that have sent us numerous emails, demands and requests, we take a look at this. And with that said, if you will make those same pleas to the City of Kingman, to the Mayor and the City Council, it would help us in making a decision on which direction that we go in the final analysis, whether it's 72 hours, 120 hours, or if it becomes an animal-controlled shelter. But I'm very much in favor of Mojave County spending these dollars towards that end. Thank you very much.
Supervisor Gould?
Thank you Madam Chairman. I actually prefer the Western Area Humane Society model where the private group that wants to do, run the humane society provides the building also, and that we'll pay them for our statutory requirement of whether it's 75 hours or 120 hours. I think that's a better way to go. And frankly, I'm not willing to make a $3 million decision with money we don't have. Because in the, we're talking about a surplus, and that surplus only exists if we raise property taxes.
No, that's not true.
The paper that I saw was making the assumption that we would adopt the same property taxation rate as last year. That is a tax increase because values have gone up. So if you adopt the same number as last year and the values go up, mathematically, that's a tax increase.
Madam Chair.
And half of the $6 million surplus is from that. I'm more than happy to take the new construction, but I'm not going to raise taxes to fund things because I made people that promise.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to remind the Board that with the extinguishment of the quarter cent sales tax, the taxpayers of Mojave County will be not having to pay almost $6.8 million a year. That is a tax decrease.
Okay, thank you.
So noted.
Madam Chairman, would it benefit the Board if we got our Finance Director up here to explain the funding? I believe what, and she can correct me if I'm wrong, what was told the Board, provided to the Board is that we believed we had from budgeted and unspent revenue, a one-time revenue stream, source, not a stream, of $6 million at the end of this year. And that was due mostly to vacancy savings and other things. And a lot of it came from the Sheriff's Office, a lot of it came from the jail. So if I could get confirmation from her that that's correct, it's not money that's going to be generated through an increase in taxes or through taxes next year, it's from existing monies that we anticipate having this year.
Okay, before we, before you come to talk, I want to get around to the other Supervisors to say whatever they want to say. Supervisor Johnson?
Excuse me, I guess my first question is, is this a number one priority for Mojave County if we're going to build something new? We have Sheriff's substations, we have the remodeling of the court, we have the tear-down of the jail, we have buildings that we're not keeping up with, and we're willing to take, I mean, I don't think, you know, we still have the Coroner's Office, whether some people think that's important or not, but it's still one of the items. But we're going with an animal shelter building, and I think if we're going to build something, we build to what our requirements are by state law. We just build a holding facility, that's what we build. I build, I think that this $3 million is looking at building a humane society, which I believe should be built by the public, not by the, not by the government. I don't think that's our responsibility because everything, the conversation that kept appearing is, we're going to build this and then let somebody else take it over. Well, that's just wrong because Supervisor Gould mentioned before, are we going to subsidize then Havasu? We should give them money every year to subsidize them because we didn't build them a facility or Bullhead? I just don't think that we're in the business of building a humane society.
Chairman Angus?
Yes.
I'd like to provide just a little bit of history if I might, and I'd like to go back to December of 2007 when the Board of Supervisors acknowledged the receipt of a needs assessment study that was intended to address the inadequate facility conditions at the animal shelter at that time and recommend a solution. Well unfortunately, the following year of the nation's economy failed and a kind of recession set in, and so the recommended improvements were never adopted by the Board. So we fast-forward to 2016 where once again, we ask that we address the conditions of the animal shelter, and we established the Citizens' Animal Shelter Needs Assessment Committee, and they worked for nearly a year putting together the information from the study in 2007 with the current statistics and the economy, and they came up with the revised study and made recommendations. This committee relied on current information and, as well as the guidelines for the standards of care in animal shelters, to make recommendations for a new shelter, plus to identify prime locations of county-owned properties in which to build. These county-owned properties are still owned by the county and still available to build a shelter. There's a couple of choices that I think would fit quite nicely, but regardless, today, it's 12 years later. There's money in the budget now, we have the support of the citizens, and I just hope that y'all will support myself and hopefully Supervisor Angus, and let's build this shelter. And this is a shelter for the entire county. This is not a City of Kingman shelter. Stray dogs will come in from the Lake Havasu area, from Bullhead, Topock, Golden Shores, Chloride, Dolan Springs, all the unincorporated areas will use this facility. So I think we can also establish a community group like the, like the lady spoke about that she's organizing, that can collect and donate to the shelter. I just wanted to remind everybody, we've been talking about this for 12 years, and I think the other buildings are important as well, but I think right now, this is critical. I think the Sheriff's deputies pretty much work in their vehicles with all the modern technology, and I would like to see a new Sheriff's Building built as well, but we don't have the quarter cent tax extension that we requested, which would have done that. So I think there's other things in play that can't be discussed under this agenda item, but I just hope for support from my fellow board members on building the new shelter.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chairman, if I could please. Supervisor Bishop, would you be willing to entertain this at the next meeting for further discussion after we can get a few more things sorted out with the City of Kingman? The possibility of the new organization of WOAS, a few more things? I think it probably would behoove us to look at this for a couple more weeks, get a little more information.
I would certainly.
I'm not withdrawing my support, I'm just saying if we could look at this another couple more weeks.
I don't think a couple of weeks is going to make any difference, and I do think the City of Kingman should be ponying up, as others have said.
Thank you. Before you make your motion, I just want to also, and I do support, I think it's just one of those things, you know, in a perfect world, it would be wonderful if an organization, but nobody is, you know, at our door wanting to build a building here. In fact, they wouldn't even, they couldn't even survive on the money they were making in the existing building. And the existing building, if I'm not incorrect, was built by the county, so we're already doing it. It's already a county-owned building, so, but for me, the number 3 million is a bit high. When I first spoke to administration about this along with Supervisor Bishop, the number we, I was, I heard was 2 million, and I thought that was a little high. I mean, it's a building with, you know, cages. So I shudder a little when I hear that 3 million. I don't think it necessarily 3 million, and I would, and it's perfect because I do want the county to look at grants. I know you can't, if you're a government, you need a nonprofit, so I think that the idea is to build it and they will come. The nonprofits, everybody wants to see a successful shelter, not a pound. I think we've just sort of, you know, we've gravitated away from the idea that, you know, we're just here, that's not what we want. I don't want it, I'm going to just speak for myself. So I think that's a good idea to get all the information, and then when it's brought back, to have a realistic number to give us, because I do not think 3 million is a realistic number. You know, you can, you can make a $3 million, but you know, we don't think we need a Taj Mahal, which is what I call the Havasu one. But again, they're doing it with raised money, and that's the way to do it. So, and I commend them, they've been working on that for a long time.
Can we hear from the Finance Director so that we can clarify what Supervisor Gold had mentioned?
Good morning Supervisors. Yes, I confirm what Mr. Hendricks stated, that the five, that there's 6 million essentially that we plan to or anticipate having by the end of this year, which we were recommending that 5 million of that be placed in the Capital Projects Fund. So that was prior years. Next year's budget does include the same tax rate, but it was not effective for these projects.
Madam Chairman. Ms. Lloyd, would you agree that if we adopt that same tax rate and we have increasing values, that the property owners will pay more taxes?
Most of the property owners will pay higher taxes.
Thank you.
I think if I have a question here, Finance Director, I've already received notice that my payment on my house was going up, and the county hasn't set their levy yet. So would that increase to my property tax be due to school districts and MCC college raising theirs?
A variety of items.
It's not just the county. What is the percentage, just for again, the percentage of people's tax bill that goes to the county is what, 17.3 or something like that?
It's between 17, depending on where you live, between 17 and 20%.
Right. And it's the secondary taxing districts.
Right.
That really, a lot of, a lot of times dictate how much your taxes are going up.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Thank you Madam Chairman. I just wanted to make the statement that I sit on the Board of Supervisors, so I set the tax rate for the Board of Supervisors. I don't sit on a school border or Mojave Community College that takes its maximum tax hike each and every year. So I have to work with what I can control and not what I cannot control. Thank you.
Although you have to accept that, those rates when they come before us in August, which we'll talk.
I have a whole different idea on that, so we might have some fun with that.
Chairman, if I can just bring it back, just bring it back to the issue at hand.
We're getting off topic here. All right, so Chairman Angus, I would like to make a motion that we table this, or continue this discussion for the next meeting.
Oh, okay, yeah, I'm sorry about that, with all this moving and tabling. So this is for item 59, right, 59? We do.
Let me second the motion, please.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
For discussion, and Madam Chair, Supervisor Watson's going to talk to the City of Kingman and these other groups. For me to get any kind of support would be that, let's say there's interest in all these things, and we continue, we say, okay, we're going to run the, what, the building we have right now. And while they're getting their money together or whatever, you know, forming their groups, I really believe that they should be looking to be independent of us, that we should run, you know, the pound per se, and then our animals, after we do our due diligence, they go to the humane society, you know, they should be, you know, even if that takes, you know, if they start up today and say we're going to raise money, we could do another lease like we did with WOAS for them, to run it, but to separate from the county. I don't think the county should be involved in the humane society, part of all our building to building for them, and I would imagine they would be interested in doing that.
So who do you think should build the building?
Mojave County Humane Society, or whatever groups, whatever group is going to go to do their humane society, like everybody else does. Why does the taxpayers of Lake Havasu have to pay for this? It's not, it's not our requirement by state law, and the same thing with Bullhead.
Okay, we do have a few people signed up to speak. Tracy Langley?
I was on that committee that she spoke of.
Name and address for the record, please.
Tracy Langley, 3965 North Pennell Street, Kingman, Arizona, 86409. Madam Chair, fellow Supervisors, in 2016, each Supervisor appointed a representative to a committee called Citizens' Animal Shelter Needs Assessment Committee. I was one of those people. Every representative on the committee took this appointment very seriously, and we did a thorough and complete job for you and the community. Our findings were that we concurred with the 2007 needs assessment that was bought and purchased by the county. A new shelter was still needed and is still needed. At that time, it was suggested that a new shelter was built, and that suggestion was given a no vote, not because of need, but because of budget. The shelter we have now is not large enough, very old, it's no longer cost-effective to continue repairing and using the current shelter. That's something that we discussed on the Needs Assessment Committee, what it would cost to continue using the current building. Even with the, with WOAS running it, the county was still responsible for repairs, I believe, over $500. So it was still costing the county every month, every year, and we put in quite a bit, like there was a couple of years ago, 200 and something thousand they spent to upgrade it. That all needs to be done again. It's not cost-effective to continue repairing and using the current shelter. Over the next 10 years, more repairs will be needed, and we'll probably exceed the amount that it would cost for a new shelter. The animals, employees and public deserve a safe, clean and inviting environment to come from, come to. This has been a hot topic in the community, there has always been a large turnout at these meetings and much discussion on the Internet. This is a concern that most of your constituents want to finally see a positive resolution on. This item has been a reoccurring issue on the agenda for longer than Buster has been a representative. It's time to put its rest, please vote to set aside money to approve the building of a new shelter, thank you. I do have a couple of things to say about what you guys were talking about before. The City of Kingman does pay. Don't know exactly how much, they pay a three-day fee, I want to say it's like 19 or 20 something dollars a day per dog. That money goes to WOAS right now. But you guys have the agreement, the gentleman over here probably knows something about it, there is an agreement with the city, but I'm not 100% sure exactly what that involves. Sheriff's Office does get funds from animal issues. All the money that they write tickets from goes to the Sheriff's Office, not to the sheltering. The boarding does go to the sheltering. I don't want to see us return to a high-kill shelter, that would be terrible. People in Mojave County, Mojave Valley, Fort Mojave especially there, and Colorado City don't realize in three days that we have a shelter sometimes. Like, they'll go to the Bullhead Shelter looking for their dog, and then they won't realize for a while that Kingman is where the shelter is, and then you've killed their dog, and then they're at your door.
Okay, Stephen Robinson.
I'm going to say something on issue 57, that Mr. Hendricks won't, will be surprised at. I agree with him that you have to adopt something.
Stop, stop, stop.
Oh, we've got to keep on task. So right now, we're talking about...
But that's why we tabled it till after that. Anyway, on this issue, it, what has happened in Western Arizona Humane Society is the ideal example of what should be done. There is plenty of generous people here in the Kingman area. The shelter should be managed by a private entity after a period of time, giving them a chance. But it seems like the instinctive reaction, anytime there's a perceived need, more government, more spending, more taxation. And that's, we've just got to get over that lust for tax dollars. We need to look for other solutions, and I think several of you on this board have suggested that, and I agree, let's look for other solutions. There's a lot of generous people here in the Kingman Golden Valley, not wealthy in Golden Valley, but a lot of people that care about it, and I think we need to look for other solutions, other than just immediately offering 1, 2, or especially 3 million dollars. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think that's all for this issue. Anyone else want to speak? You've been sitting here so long. Thank you. Okay, so I believe we had a motion and a second. To continue, all right? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. So you, Ryan, should we go back to 57 now, or at the end?
I would do it now.
Okay. So we're going to bring back, do we have to do a motion to anything before, just bring it back, 57?
Bring it back.
I never did this before, never experienced this. Okay, so now we're back to Agenda Item 57, which was the discussion to authorize the operation of the county Kingman's based animal control shelter to be brought in-house, effective July 1, to ensure seamless operation.
Chairman Angus, it looks like we're where we were before. We really don't have a decision made on 59 yet, so with that being said, I'll just go ahead and make a motion that we approve authorizing the operation of the county's Kingman-based animal control shelter to be brought in-house, effective July the 1st, 2019.
Second.
Okay, anyone want to discuss?
For discussion. I guess I still have the question, and I'm not sure where we're going, whether, the positions that we're hiring are more for shelter positions, where if we, if we do what we're required by law, then they should be more heavy on animal, animal control officers. So if we go out and try to hire these people, and then, I don't know how the vote's going to go, and it changes, then those people wouldn't be qualified, I'm guessing they wouldn't be qualified to be animal control officers. And I don't know that we have people in the county that can even short-gap it. I doubt it.
So Supervisor Angus, my motion was based on the way that Item 57 is written for a seamless transition to county operation, from the way it's been operated now.
Is it possible to make this in the motion to be reassessed? You know, because it's kind of an emergency situation, so can we just have a limit on time, say we'll do this, and then reassess the situation, let's say, six months' time, or eight months, and maybe by then, the...
At any time, you can reassess at any time, but that's something, you could vote on it, approve it, and decide, you know, six months from now, we want to bring it back, or three months from now.
Right, well, I want to make, I want to put it in a way that maybe everyone can agree on, because I don't think people agree on stuff, and we have to do something today.
You could put a window on that, and say, well, we'll bring it back in six months, or whatnot. Or it's nine months, or whatever the timeframe be.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
We might explore the possibility of making a deal with WOAS in Lake Havasu and Bullhead City to take the animals that the, that the animal control officers pick up currently, and to hold them at those facilities.
There's no way, I'm telling you, Bullhead City's going to do that, they're overtaxed anyway, there's not enough space for all those animals.
And I doubt if Lake Havasu wants all of the Rollin Springs dogs that have been coming in with Parvo and Distemper, and...
I believe they had been taking some of them and adopting them out as it was.
After a large medical bills.
I don't know about the Parvo ones, but I know that they were shipping dogs down from the Kingman Shelter to Lake Havasu to adopt them out.
Well, we can ask as part of our due diligence, you know, going forward, but, you know, we have to, I believe, decide today how to do, because it's, there's going to be nobody there at the end of this month.
Madam Chair, is it possible, asks the county attorney, to hire on a temporary basis the staffing that's there for a period of 30 days or 60 days?
I don't know, I'd have to look into it, I really don't know the answer, I'm sorry. I mean, and that's probably, I'd have to work with HR, I just don't know the answer. We do contract with people, but I'd just have to look into it.
Go ahead.
Madam Chairman, I do believe it's possible to hire full-time temporary employees, and generally, the rule of thumb for full-time temporary employees is that they are, work for six months, so it would be a process of changing the classification of that job description to full-time temporary. And then, the only, I would have to ask HR's assistants, but it's my understanding, the difference would be that that full-time temporary would not be obtaining benefits from, full benefits from Mojave County. But that should be a possibility.
I feel, I would feel much more comfortable with something like that, that was my problem right from the start.
I think the only thing we'd have to do then is put, you know, somebody over it, because they wouldn't have the WOAS organization, you could do the clerk, maybe, or...
Yeah, whoever's qualified to do it. Now, how about volunteers? Because I know that...
Madam Chairman, I do have a representative from HR up here, if we could ask. And, so you can have a definitive on what we're voting on.
You know, while she's walking up here, I just want to bring up the point that if I was one of these employees, I would want a little more security, then you can work for us for six months, and then we'll decide if we're going to continue, so that's my concern.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Madam members of the board, Mr. Hendricks is correct, temporary is our possibility, but we do risk having more challenges in recruiting temporary, because as he said, there are no benefits eligible for those temporary positions, so...
Does anyone know if these employees were getting benefits from WOAS?
Full-time employees, yes.
Full-time employees. Maybe we can do, like, one full-time, and then...
About six full-time employees.
Madam Chairman, I believe in the proposal that's in front of you, we reflected the exact same configuration that WOAS had. So they had about eight temporary employees, and about eight or nine, and about six full-time employees, and I think that's what's presented before you. And we could certainly take a look at making additional employees temporary, full-time temporary, the key positions, so that we would have a better ability attracting those people and retaining them, at least for a short period of time, probably, if I was going to recommend, would need to be full-time permanent employees, which would be, if their job goes away, their position goes away.
As Madam Chair, my idea was somehow, and maybe HR can, if it can be done, not to hire them as employees, but just to continue as a contract, to work there until they decide, exactly, until the board decides what it's going to do, because if we go ahead with what's proposed today, then it goes out to people bidding on it, you know, or putting their names in, so there's no saying, you know, I'm not saying that these people wouldn't be hired, but, you know, there could be somebody else hired that comes along that's better qualified, if that happens. I mean, there's, there's no job security today by passing this, saying everybody's going to stay there, there could be other people that come in because of background checks or something else.
That, I didn't even think about that. So if we did put them as workers, we'd have to put it out there, and then what's that process to get six people?
We're prepared to do that, Madam Chairman. We have, this, with this authorization today, if you voted in favor of taking it in-house, we would immediately advertise to the public, and encourage those existing employees to apply. And if we had more qualified individuals that would apply, that would apply for the positions, then we win. If we had employees that, existing employees that would apply that couldn't pass a background check, then we would have it open to the public, and we would look to the public to fill that. But our goal would be to hire the most qualified individuals for those positions.
Madam Chair, the question, is there a way that we can continue, it always depends, who knows if the employees want to continue, you know, but if, but is there a way that we can continue without hiring them onto the county, or doing it with contract labor?
With contracted labor, we run the risk of, like Mr. Hendricks was saying, there's holes and cracks and stuff. If we move forward with the proposed plan today, we do have those classifications created based on a classification survey that HR has done for the past month, guaranteed employment, longevity, and helping the public. Contracted labor is a little more risky, they may not be as eligible and meet the minimum qualifications of the positions that these classifications require. It's more of a gray area, but it's not undoable, but it's a lot more riskier than the plan that's proposed today.
Riskier for who? I mean, I don't understand that at all.
If, like Mr. Hendricks says, they don't pass a background, we're two weeks in, we're out of time. If what's proposed today does go through, we already have the positions drafted, ready to go fly to the public today, the positions have been created for the job descriptions, and in the light of...
The people that who are working there now, and you seem to be intimately involved in that, did they have to pass the background check?
Yes.
In accordance with our contract, they did.
So everyone there now has passed the background check, so that crack is covered.
Seven point in time, correct.
That crack has been covered. I, do you want to say anything?
And we're...
I would just say that having employees that are already experienced, that are willing to come to work for the county, is good for us, is good for our liabilities, because if we have to go out and hire inexperienced people and train them, we're opening ourselves up for liable there, too, so...
Madam Chairman, we can't, on temporary employees, we could direct select, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct?
Correct.
So if we made these positions temporary, we could go out and direct select the individuals that are currently working at the shelter for those positions, and we would behoove ourselves to go ahead and do a background check on them, to make sure that that's up to date. The other thing that we would do, if we advertise to the public, you know, we would certainly encourage all those existing employees to apply, and try to pick up as many of the trained employees as we possibly, we could. It depends on what you're trying to accomplish.
Has there been a problem with the service at WOAS, I mean, at the shelter now?
Madam Chairman, the feedback that I've received is the current manager of the shelter is doing a very good job, I received that feedback from the Sheriff's Animal Control people through my staff, and through others. I understand the shelter is being run, it's clean, it's organized, and it's being run very well.
Okay, so if we, if it's being run well, and we know it is, why wouldn't we want to keep that group? And if the way we can keep that group is to do by contract with direct select, why wouldn't we?
We, who would we contract with?
Each individual. Or make them temporary. The point is, I think it's between your plan that was, you know, hires, or doing something temporary until we know what's going on.
Madam Chair, member boards, boards of the member, it's my understanding from Coral as well, the IRS doesn't allow you to do contract labor in that methodology.
Okay, but we could do temporary. Or we could do permanent, and try to hire as, you know, we're doing eight temporary right now, aren't I? I don't remember the staffing roster, but it seems like there were eight or nine temporary employees that were going to be, positions that were going to be created, and six permanent, that sounded right to me?
Pretty close to nine permanent, and about six temporary, yes, sir.
However, the board chooses to move forward. Chairman, I would recommend that we go forward with the existing plan, and try to provide benefits and attract those. It could conceivably be that the existing employees, unless they receive the benefits, aren't going to be interested in the positions, I don't know. But I was trying to, by making those permanent positions permanent, we would have a better chance attracting the qualified employees.
Chairman Angus, it's my understanding that these employees, we have full-time employees, and then we have the volunteers, and you can't count on the volunteers, if, but there's not enough employees to do all the work without the volunteers, is my understanding, so. So to do a seamless transition, we keep all the employees that are there, hopefully the volunteers will stay, hopefully nobody will notice any difference, and then if we need to, as time goes on and progresses, we could make adjustments to personnel at that time, if we need more, if we need less.
Madam Chairman, that's an excellent suggestion, and your idea, I can, probably the fastest way to be up and running is exactly what you suggested, we would make all positions full-time temporary, we could go out and direct select, the board could authorize us to go out and direct select those positions, and I believe we have the ability to do that, and HR has confirmed that. At some future date, if we needed to contemplate providing benefits, because the position's extended past the six months, we could certainly do that. And Madam Chairman, I believe we could, staff can certainly make your suggestion work.
Madam Chair, I don't think, what I was trying to do was protect the people that were there, maybe it was a bad way to do it, but, you know, at least give them three weeks, or whatever, till we come back with our decision on what we're going to do, so they had it, and not have to go through a hiring process, and all that entails.
That's not what Mike just said.
But if we're going to go through the hiring process within a day, then I guess in three weeks, or two weeks, whenever we meet again, if we, whatever's coming back, if we decide we're going in a different direction, we've wasted those two weeks, but I guess that's what government does, so...
I'm confused, because I think what Mike just said is what you want to happen.
Yeah, it would be...
I think he wants to hire them, but I'm thinking he's hiring those people on direct, unless I misunderstood him, let's say the board comes back and says, either way it goes, then we'd have to go out for, well, because then you're not opening it up, I don't think...
No, that's not what he said, would you repeat it?
We will make, we can make those positions full-time temporary, and the advantage that we might be able to provide the people is, from an administrative perspective, I could increase the salary, because we're not giving them benefits, I could increase it a nominal amount, but still be within the ranges that the HR has specified, and I could immediately go out between now and July 1, and offer those positions to those individuals, and direct select them, and, but they would be part-time, full-time temporary, and not subject to benefits from the county, which I think were a couple of criterias you all wanted to see. And we could make that work very well.
Right, that sounds, that covers our concerns.
Right, if they have the knowledge, if it, once we have the vote in two weeks, depending on which way it goes, they could either be out of a job, you know, or it could be going out to a bid, you know, a job opening.
Welcome to government. Yeah, I mean, I think that they will have to know that, because this is pretty much like an emergency situation, that we're just trying to have a seamless, you know, while we make some of the other big decisions during the budget, so it's, I think it's a good solution.
It would have been nice if we had more time to do this, but it is an emergency now, so, 30 days was just not long enough time. So I have a motion on the floor. Ryan, do I need to amend that motion, and this is so...
I don't recall that we have a motion on the floor, do we? What exactly is it?
You had a motion, and a second.
Who seconded it?
Gary, Gary seconded it.
Oh, okay. Oh, did you?
And if you wanted amendment, it would, amended, it would be to hire these employees in as full-time... in as full-time temporaries.
Okay, so Jenny, I will amend my motion to include...
Yep, I'm withdrawing.
Thank you.
So my amended motion would include the full-time temporary employees.
Okay. Do we have a second? I'll second it. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 60, this is brought by Supervisor Gould, discussion of possible action. Are we on the right one? Approve an addition to the regular Kingman location rotating the Mojave County Board of Supervisors meeting between Bullhead City and Lake Havasu City once per quarter on a schedule to be determined. The rotation of meeting locations will be formed for a period of one year, beginning in October of 2019. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Essentially, this is the same thing that we discussed previously, except they put a one-year for a year, so that we could see how it works and see what the attendance is.
Anyone else want to say anything?
I just have one thing to add. If we do vote in favor, if the board votes in favor of this, I think we'll have to change the notice. I think we have a notice that says the supervisor meetings occur in this building, so we'd have to change that just to make sure the public is aware of that, so...
Yes.
Madam Chairman, I did want to acknowledge what Supervisor Johnson said the last time this was heard, and he is absolutely correct that the salaries and costs for all the employees that would be participating are already paid for. They're already included in our budget. The only thing that we would be realizing is the productivity that may be lost, and that's just for travel time. We're already paying our staff, as you can see, to sit at these meetings. So, yeah, actual dollars to the county, there'd be very little impact.
And just to add to what I was saying, too, like, for example, on the website, if we go to Clerk of the Board's website, it just says, you know, meetings are held in the Board of Supervisor auditoriums located at 700 West Beale Street, Kingman, so we'd have to change any kind of notices like that. We'd just have to find those, wherever those are, and make sure those are updated.
Well, it's really interesting, because when we talked about it six years ago, I was told about all the expenses and all the hardships, and now all of a sudden, it's easy-peasy, which...
Madam Chairman, I stood up in front of the board when we were doing that, and I was a proponent for taking you all around, and I said to the board that salaries of all the people that would be participating is already paid for, and that's what I was acknowledging with Supervisor Johnson, because I made a point to say that there actually was, would be no increased cost to the county for taking you all around.
Okay. Chairman Angus?
Yeah. I think this decision is one that should be voted on by all of the board members, and since Supervisor Watson is not here, can we continue it to another meeting?
You don't want to continue it?
No, let's just take a vote.
Okay. Can I just say one thing? So is your idea, because you want more people to come and experience it, because they can't? Because if we still, if we do it during the day, are you talking about doing it night or during the day?
Didn't spell it out.
Right, because if during the day, you know, the same issue's going to be, people working, they can't come, because we talked about doing a night meeting here, like, you know, maybe once every six months or something, and that way people can come who just want to, you know, I thought that made more sense, and, you know, it was a big thing for a long time, but then the more I was here, I realized that, you know, people who have things to talk about, they come here, and no one's ever really brought it up again.
Madam Chairman, you have a feeling amongst my constituents that they don't even know the existence of a county government?
[laughing] So they...
To tell you the truth, in the Lake Havasu area especially, they aren't even hardly aware of a county government, because the majority of them live in Lake Havasu. So it's almost as if the county government only applies to Kingman. And I think this would do a little bit to make those folks feel a little more included, since about 40% of the taxes come out of Lake Havasu area, and quite a bit of taxes that probably darn near as much come out of the Bullhead City area, too.
Supervisor Johnson, is that something that, because you're from that area?
Well, Madam Chair, you talked about evening meetings, Lake Havasu tried that, you know, they moved theirs to evenings. They have no more people show up in the evenings than they do in the daytime. Moving them around, you'll find out that, well, in a year's time, it'll be hard to tell, because the newness will wear off, we'll have people show. But the one thing that it does do is it stops a lot of people when you say, when they start complaining about things or they have questions, and you say, you know, "We just had a meeting in Bullhead, did you attend?" "No." And then usually they quiet down, because they realize that you're giving them those services, you're bringing out to meet them. You won't have that many people showing up at them. I think towards the end, Bullhead was really down to, I think, a few city people. Havasu kept up. But I think it's just the idea that we take it out, especially we have a county our size, you know, and with a sparse population, you know, and obviously in places like Phoenix, it would be hard to do, you know, to move them around. But I think it's a good idea to move them out, you know, quarterly, just so the people have a chance to, you know, to meet the county manager or to, you know, if they have questions or those people to see what's going on in the areas.
Changed your mind a bit, huh? Because you weren't for it when we first talked about it.
No, I think I...
No, I don't think so. Okay.
So Chairman Angus, I have to think about my constituents. Can you imagine driving all the way from Meadview to Lake Havasu or Bullhead City to attend a meeting that you have a concern about, or in Supervisor Watson's area all the way from Colorado City? I mean, Kingman's quite a hall for them as it is, and we are the county seat, so people expect the meetings to be held in the county seat, and I think it's done that way in most counties. They hold their meetings in the county seat, so...
Okay.
Chairman, I can just make one other thing. Just under the open meeting laws, at the beginning of a period, we can post, we can post a notice saying, "This is when we meet, this is the regular date, time, location, place and time." I don't know if we do, it's an optional thing whether we do that or not. Do we, do you know, if we do that, Clerk of the Board?
Yes, it is posted, and if it does change, I can post an amended meeting schedule.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to verify that. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I move that Item 60 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Let's do a roll call. Can we do that now that I've called for the vote?
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bishop?
No.
Supervisor Gould?
Yes.
Chairman Angus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Now we're talking. Item 62, item 61, excuse me, this was brought by Supervisor Watson, approve the appointment of Nicole Bratley to the 2020 Census Complete Count Committee representing District One.
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the next one, the last item I brought forward, and that is Agenda Item 62, and this discussion of possible action, designate the necessary funding in the FY20 budget to fill the position of Communications Director. All right, since I brought this forward, it's something that we have talked about. We are probably the only county who doesn't have a PIO and/or, and I'm not even going to say PIO anymore, because that connotes a lot of bad memories in this county, which we don't really have to go into. I think people know that things happened years ago that probably shouldn't have happened, and that's why they're not, they're not here anymore. But we're at a time where information has to get out quickly, correctly, and unifyingly. And I think now's the time, because of sort of budget, the money that has come in this year, that we at least talk about doing a Communications Director. And in the packet, there is the job description, which I think that if we wanted to talk about, there are some things I'd want to change. But all in all, I foresee this person being, doing all the press releases, being the media contact. I mean, right now, if there's a, something happens within the county, and this happened back in like 2013 or '14, remember when that bus rolled over and at night in the flood? And I was getting calls from, they didn't know who to call, they're calling me, and I go, "Who do I call about this?" And, you know, whatever. And I think that's why it's important. There are counties the same size as ours that have whole communications departments, and then you have the social media, where, you know, people can get information about things that are happening in the county, things that affect them, instead of waiting maybe for the newspaper to sometimes get it right. It can come right from our department, and it would take, it would ease the burden off of some of the staff as well, because each department now does their own. So there's no sort of unifying voice, you know, that's worded wrong. I mean, there's a whole psychology. I mean, I was in, I was in public relations, and so I know the importance of it. Just to get sort of the elephant in the room out of it, it is not a political job at all. The job of this person would not be to go after other elected officials or, you know, but it would be to get information out. And I'm confident in the county manager, as we have him today, to do it correctly. And I think this person would report to the county manager, but we have, you know, we have our voice here if something that happens is not to our liking. So if everyone does their jobs the way we're supposed to do our jobs, I don't see how there can be any problem with having a Communications Director that basically is an integral part of every organization in the country today. I've said my piece. Supervisor Gould.
Okay. I'm not a fan of having somebody speak for me. I think my constituents deserve to hear me speak for myself, rather than a Public Information Officer or whatever we choose to, you know, form as their title. And I actually think the press would rather speak to the department heads and us as individuals and the county manager or the county attorney or the clerk, they would rather speak directly to them than the spin doctor. Because generally, I've ended up in the minority on a lot of things through my political history. I don't necessarily want somebody else speaking for me, because all they're doing is putting forth a majority opinion. When I was in the Senate, we had a guy that put forth the majority opinion. That's his job, it was to put out the majority opinion. We've done without one for so long, I think you make, it's a hard case to actually say that we need one, when we've been able to get along without one for so long.
Okay. Again, this position wouldn't be speaking for us. That's, it's like any organization that has a communications department. But again, I think this is a decision that needs the full board, because it is part of the budget. So I'm going to make a motion. Is it going to be too late for the next meeting to speak about this, to get into the budget?
Madam Chairman, no, it wouldn't.
Okay, because I prefer the entire board to make this, since it is a budget item, to make that decision.
You can make, Madam Chairman, we can make decisions about the budget up until the time it's adopted.
So I make a motion that we continue this item for the next meeting. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Supervisor Gould?